Next, we have the resolution for 209 Mary Avenue, Maury Avenue Comprehensive Plan Amendment Future Land Use Map. And was there a, were we?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to give an update, and I think Mr. Alfley has a point of clarification, but on this particular item, the, at your last meeting, there was a rezoning before the council. And that rezoning did not have any proffers nor any plan associated with it. Since then, the applicant, Mr. Armstrong, has submitted proffers. And pursuant to the city code thirty-four dash sixty-five, since there were no proffers considered at the last council hearing or by the planning commission when this item was before them, the resolution before you would remand and refer back both the rezoning application as well as there was a comprehensive plan amendment with this. And these would both go back to the planning commission. But I do think Mr. Alfley does have one point of clarification as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, Matt Alfley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. As legal counsel was saying on, so on July first, this body had a public hearing on the rezoning. And then the following week, Planning Commission did take up the comprehensive plan amendment portion of this. Then on the twenty-third, after both bodies had heard the information, additional information was submitted. A conceptual plan and a proposed proffer. And as staffs understanding that city council would like to send that back to Planning Commission to be reviewed, staff is just asking for a little, just some guidance and clarification, how far back you're wanting the applicant to go. So as part of a rezoning or a special use, an applicant holds a community engagement meeting where the community gets to see the information being presented, that's usually fairly early in the process. This original application again was just a straight rezoning, no conceptual plan, no proffers. So what we're asking is if you're wanting the applicant to go back further in the process to engage the public so that they're aware of the conceptual drawing and the proffer, or if you're just sending this straight back to the information that you received from the applicant, straight back to Planning Commission to make a recommendation on the new information. So that's kind of the only clarification we were looking for.
So I think since the public is unaware of the new plan, that they should.
I agree.
Yes, so it should go back to engagement with the communities surrounding.
It's just a logistics thing, I mean, that would probably place it more likely on October or November's Planning Commission agenda, so you probably would see it again November, December.
Okay. Any other? All right, thank you. All right, then next, we have an appropriation, city schools hiring of teachers for the push-in.
I'm sorry, could you have a resolution, a vote on the resolution?
All right, I didn't know if we need it. All right, so is there a motion?
Wait, what are you?
A resolution?
No, two.
Oh, I may have to adopt the resolution to, that the rezoning application and the comprehensive plan amendment pertaining to the property located at 209 Maury Avenue in the city and designated on 2019 Charlottesville City Tax Map Seventeen as Parcell One Eighty, Eight, One Eighty One Point One, One Eighty Point Two, One Eighty Four, One Eighty Five, and One Eighty Six, I hereby referred back to the Charlottesville Planning Commission for reconsideration in light of new proffers presented by the applicant. And should we add also that it, that the applicant should also engage the community?
In a community engagement section.
In the, in the community engagement section.
A second. All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Boy. All right, now we have the appropriation for the city schools hiring of teachers for the push-in gifted program for $468,000, second of two readings. So we have some members.
Good evening, Mayor Walker.
Good evening.
Councilpersons and Dr. Richardson. Thank you for having us tonight. What we'd like to do is, very recently, we came before council to ask that council appropriate funding to add eight additional teachers to our teaching staff in the city school system for the specific purpose of changing our gifted model, delivery, instructional delivery model in our schools. It was a very unusual request because it came outside of a normal budget cycle. We want to thank council for entertaining that request. And what we'd like to do is present to council now the gifted model that we are proposing to put in our schools and give you an update as to where we are with those positions. So I'd like to invite Bev Catlin to go over that gifted model with you and answer any questions that you might have. We'd also like to give you a very brief update on some of the other equity issues that we're addressing now.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor Walker and councilmembers, Dr. Richardson. I am pleased to be here to share a snapshot of Charlottesville's new pathways for gifted education. Our goal is to support high-quality curriculum and instruction for all students while offering gifted students educational experiences that meet their needs. Gifted education, like all things in education, continually, continually looks at what it is doing, evaluates the effects of its procedures, and makes the changes necessary to address the current needs of students. Throughout this process, Charlottesville has and will continue to review its work through a lens of equity. With the new pathways, gifted resource teachers will provide all students with high-quality services in general education classes on a regular basis. Students will receive differentiated experiences that enrich and extend the standard curriculum. As both the classroom teacher and the gifted resource teacher tap into students' interests and talents, all children will be asked to stretch their thinking as critical and creative problem solvers. Classroom teachers and gifted resource teachers will collaborate in planning curriculum, identifying resources, and differentiating instruction to address the needs of all learners. Through shared decision-making, they will monitor student progress and address individual needs. Together, they can put together a plan that has the gifted resource teacher working with all students in a multitude of ways. At all times, they will communicate and collaborate while focusing on each student's academic growth. Last year, our specialists did extensive research on current best practices in gifted education and talked with experts in the field. A resource that was highly recommended was the National Association for Gifted Children. Its site studies, its site studies have found that the challenge and complexity of curriculum and instruction is what matters, not how program services are designed. NHGC has developed guidelines for the effective components of a gifted program. Their research shows that curriculum and instruction should provide opportunities for enrichment, acceleration, and differentiation. The next slides will show how Charlottesville's new pathways move us from a traditional framework for gifted education to an inclusive programming framework. This year, students in first through third grade will participate in higher-order thinking activities to add to their student portfolios. So this will be a new piece for us with student portfolios. And teachers will also document the thinking that they observe when students are working through these portfolio activities and communicating about the kinds of learning, the kinds of thinking that they're doing with those activities. In addition, the division will expand its universal screening of all students to two grade levels. All second graders will take a non-verbal ability test, and all third graders will take a nationally-normed ability test and an achievement test. For identification, moving forward, it will be, our identification for gifted services will take place during third grade. In addition, the division will establish a process for collecting and evaluating student portfolios and the notes that teachers took in their observations. At all times, we will examine our work through the lens of equity, paying special attention to students from historically underrepresented populations. For this coming year, gifted resource teachers will provide direct services in general education classrooms. The in-class or clustering of students will allow every child to participate in lessons that emphasize critical and creative thinking skills. And again, work samples from these and other lessons will be gathered for student portfolios. Together, classroom and gifted resource teachers will cultivate the talents of every student and monitor their academic growth. Working collaboratively, classroom teachers and gifted resource teachers will work to develop differentiated lessons and identify instructional materials that meet the needs of every learner. We will use components from four high-quality curriculum models to develop differentiated resources. These materials will be posted electronically on the division curriculum site and shared regularly with classroom teachers, as well as lent to the division's curriculum frameworks for everyone to use. In our inclusive framework, professional learning has classroom teachers and gifted resource teachers sharing their expertise with each other. We will move from an awareness of differentiation to ongoing practice, reflection, and refinement. Staff will receive training in the four curriculum models that have us embed differentiation strategies in our lessons and provide challenging experiences to all. To support this professional learning, classroom teachers will participate in ongoing training on strategies that support differentiation and academic growth. Some of this work, as you may have heard and read in the media, is being led by Dr. Carol Thomason at the University of Virginia. In addition, gifted resource teachers will work with another expert at UVA as they implement innovative curricular and instructional practices in all classrooms. Working together, our school and division cultures will support improved practice and student growth. I share this quote from Michael Follin, as it describes the process ahead. "As a division, we are beginning a journey. With new pathways, we will look forward to implementing new practices, reviewing our progress, and continually revising our work, so we offer every child an outstanding learning experience every day."
So as we look at this new model, our request for the eight additional teachers is so that we can put one additional teacher in each of our six elementary schools and then have an additional teacher in our upper elementary and our middle school, at our middle school level. Having two teachers at each of our elementary schools will give us the opportunity to have the push-in model separated kindergarten through second grade and then third and fourth grade, so that we can have a comprehensive program in each of those classrooms to be able to meet the needs of all of the students. Currently, of the eight teachers, our staff have been successful in hiring five of those eight teachers. So we have one elementary school that we're still in the process of reviewing applications, and we hope very soon to hire that additional teacher for the elementary school. The next slide, I'd like to just give you an update of some of the other equity work that's going on. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. There are four major areas that we're working on in equity. One is supported and supported, supported and supportive staff. We are in the process of recruiting highly qualified individuals in the teacher rank and in the admin rank, and specifically highly qualified individuals of color. Today, we had an equity workshop, and we introduced our five new assistant principals. And the presenter commented, said, wow, all five of those new administrators are black, African-American. And, and it was just, those were the individuals who rose to the top, highly qualified, very, very astute individuals who will be joining our admin team. So we're pleased with that, and tomorrow, we will welcome our new teachers. And we've been quite successful in hiring teachers of color to add to our complement. We're also redesigning the support that we have for our new teachers and for our teachers of color to make sure that they have an identifiable network that they can connect with. We have also continued the professional learning. As I said, we had equity training today. It was the second of a series of workshops that we will be having with our staff. We, we are having those workshops with our administrators first. And when our new teachers come back, we will start having some of the same workshops with new teachers and then our veteran teachers. We intend also our school board will be involved in the equity training also. Growing relationships, we've expanded our, our family engagement positions. We now have two positions that are working out in the community to connect the community and the school to make sure that we have seamless transitions. We also are building Bring Back the Village, where we have members of the community that we will empower to mentor our students, not only mentor them in the community, but also mentor them in our schools. We're making progress towards better communication between our families, making sure that our families have the information and the tools that are necessary to make wise decisions about the courses that their students are involved in, and questions, and, and taking advantage of opportunities that are available to their students. We also have the diverse, inclusive, and rigorous learning. You've just heard about our, our gifted program, the redesign of our gifted program. We have extended the honors option selection, not only now at Charlottesville High School, but will be at Walker and Buford. And our teachers and our staff are quite excited about that option. We will have, continue to diversify our history curricula. We will be working with staff members from Monticello and the Jefferson School in order to continue to diversify that history curriculum and to codify that in alignment with the SOLs, not only our history, our black history, but also our local history. Equity Foundation, we've hired an equity supervisor, and she is, she came in, hit the ground running. Many of you may know her, Denise Johnson, already doing a fabulous job for us. We also have, currently, we have a division-level, level equity committee, and we are starting to establish school-level equity councils that will be in place to help us with the equity work. We also are aligning the work that we're doing now with Brian Williams, who is a professor at the University of Virginia. He's working with us on some of the workshops. We also are a member, member of the Racial Equity Leadership Network and the National Equity Project. And we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Outstanding work, Dr. Atkins. I must say, I'm very pleased with the commitment that we're making in our school towards equity and the new hires, the recent hires, not only from the assistant principals, but also from the equity perspective, specifically Ms. Johnson. I've heard tremendous things in the community from parents about the work. Also, let's say, major kudos to you all and the school board, specifically revolving around Quest. There's some people who may have had some questions or whatnot, but I think it is a great idea for you all to expand this program, and this will be an opportunity for more students to take advantage. One of my daughters, my youngest daughter is in Quest, and she absolutely loves it. So I think having more kids, have the opportunity to take advantage is, is only going to be a benefit. So thank you all for your hard work.
Yeah, I thought about this a little bit, and Ms. Houchens was here earlier, but it's sort of like the science camp that she used to be a part of at Benaboo. I don't know if they're still doing it, but when my son was there, they were. And it just gives you those extra kind of enrichment activities around a subject and brings, you know, children in in a way that is not just the, you know, standard teaching method. And I know that the. And I know that the kids in that program really, you know, enjoyed the concepts around science that, you know, they were doing versus. So I think, I'm not an expert on what the push-in model is, but I understand, like, from having two kids who've been in Quest and one who's still in the high school that's in Quest, I think that being, you know, either the only or one of two usually black kids in the program, that I'm excited to see what this push-in model, how it opens it up for, you know, other kids to be a part of it and not so, you know, as limiting as it has been in the past.
I think the major part about our redesign is that all students will receive a curricula that helps them to develop a stronger cognitive processes, to be able to process more complex language and more complex problem solving. And that's an important part of their development, so that all of our students will be involved in that level of rigor. We will have much better first instruction for all of our students.
I do have some questions. And thank you, Dr. Atkins. This is a very wonderful presentation, and I have to say that there's a little, I'm having a little deja vu. And I was just counting the years, it was 23 years ago when my older son just started in the school division, so that was in Johnson Elementary School. And I don't think I'm misremembering, but the inclusion model was very strong at Johnson. And I've had the experience of a child identified for Quest and won that. So I didn't see any pullouts at that time. Now, I don't know if that changed or was different between schools, but I don't remember seeing that so pronounced, if at all. And second, when I got onto the school board, and that was in 2008, we were talking differentiated instruction every school board meeting. And I feel bad that Ms. Blount's not here, because we were together on and talking about that. So I'm not, was there a change in state policy that somehow things got slowed down in your forward trajectory? Because this was, this was what we were all pushing for 12 years ago.
So can I?
And I'm just curious, what was going on?
I don't know the answer from the school, but I would like to answer it just from a community perspective. I remember a few years back when we were having conversations just around the unleveling, and parents who, if you attended some of those meetings, parents who did not want that to happen, how forceful they were. I mean, what I'm seeing as the changes now is that since August 2017, we have a community who says we want a different community, and instead of just giving lip service to stuff, they're actually maybe possibly moving out the way so that some of the leaders in this community can actually create the environments that we have claimed or professed to have always had. And so even though there have been, you know, you know, giving lip service to the diversity and inclusion, I haven't seen it as, I mean, I was in the school system 23 years ago.
Yeah.
This very one we're talking about, so I can, and, you know, having kids, you know, go through it and being a part of some of these meetings, when you're talking about having kids in Quest program or, you know, a fine arts program that is a great program for certain students, but how the inclusion model hasn't really been, I haven't seen it be, you know, be very active, but that's just my perception, but...
Mayor Walker, and that's a point well taken. I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, because we have talked already about how this is an unusual request in mid-budget cycle, and as this has been always a priority of the school division, I just would have liked to have seen these requests for this particular kind of direction as a city councilor earlier and within our budget cycle. And I suspect moving forward, we will see that. And I just, I'm just speaking that when I left the school board, I thought that you were getting the resources, you were on this trajectory, and now we realize you weren't. And so I'm glad we're getting caught up. But please, just make sure, you know, let us, let the future council know that you've got to have these resources to do that in, within the fiscal year. And that way, you won't be caught without, you know, scrambling and maybe not even having the resources to hire the teachers you need, because I know it's really hard to find teachers this time of year.
I have to commend our staff. They've done our principals and HR staff, they've done a remarkable job getting the staff in place. And I will say to you that it's not that we were not doing differentiated instruction, nor did we turn our backs on providing gifted services. We have some of the best teachers for gifted education that you can find anywhere in this region, and they've done a very good job in providing instruction. What was flawed about what we were doing is the model that we were using to provide that instruction. A pullout model will always leave some students in the classroom, and by the sheer nature that we were not identifying a very many African-American students, that meant when we pulled students out of the classroom to provide the services for the students, as good as the services are and were during last year and previous years, it always left students in the classroom. And when you leave students in a classroom, they're wondering, "There must be something wrong with me, because I'm not going out with everyone else."
I completely agree.
So that separation continued year after year, and we were adding some African-American students, but not a large percentage of students to those cohorts that were receiving those services. So now, our community is in a place that we can make those changes and we can make them swiftly. We've been working on this model in the fall, coming forward, and we got to the place that we could make the request. We could have waited for another budget cycle, but that would have meant going into the 19, 20 school year and leaving some of that old model in place. And we chose to come before council outside of that cycle and to ask for forgiveness for having to come outside of that cycle, but the model was more important to us.
I think, I mean, again, I'm just glad that the inclusion model is, which is now called the push-in, is now, now kind of the course that you're following completely, division-wide. And again, I wish Ms. Blount was here to hear it, so.
I talked to her.
Good.
And I know last we talked about, I just think even making more proactive going into this budget cycle so that we're all kind of, even during the fall time, like, understanding like what challenges are gonna be facing the budget. I mean, obviously, this is one-time appropriation, so it's not yet built into the operating budget yet, and so we have to figure out how to kind of connect those dots. So I just think that the more we can have conversations with council and the school board, being proactive about that, I think the better.
I totally agree, and we will. We just had a conversation about moving forward with the RFP for the renovation of Beaufort and Walker, as we continue to talk about the reorganization of our grade levels. So we'll be talking with council about that also in the fall.
Great.
Thank you.
And just one more point to that. I think we all, just from a council standpoint and members and who might be future council members, when you're talking about issues related to equity, they're not just that cut and dry to where things may come up after the budget cycle is over, so I'm encouraging us to just be, you know, a little bit more flexible when these type of items come before us, because if it's wait another year, for some kids, that'll be their last year in school, for some kids, it may be those critical, and there are so many critical years, depending on who you talk to, that, and this is not your, you know, appropriation on here today for the schools, but just in general, that if we're a community who, if we really want what we're saying that we want, we're gonna have to have some flexibility in when things come up that we can fund, that we just, you know, take them seriously and not just push them to another cycle.
I think we, I'll talk to this very seriously. And here we are.
We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
We need a move motion.
We have to read out the motion?
We all know the motion is.
Can we just go? All right, let's go. For the school, for the kids, I so move for the appropriation of 468 mil... No, I'm just kidding. They would have liked that.
Yes.
For the appropriate...
And I get excited.
They got real excited, and y'all woke up, woke up when I said that. I so move for the appropriation of $468,000 from the Council Strategic Initiatives Fund and Equity Allocation and the Citywide Reserve Fund to the Charlottesville City Schools.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero.
Next, we have the ordinance resolution for the Flint Hill Plan Unit Development.
Start to read all these.
Let me.
Did you have?
I'll handle that. Yeah, well, okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is somewhat similar to the 209 Maury Avenue item that we just discussed. After your July 1st meeting, when you first considered the Flint Hill rezoning as well as the Critical Slops waiver and the street vacation, the applicant, Mr. Armstrong, has submitted a revised proffer statement, which you have before you. Now, it's a little different from 209 Maury, because since there was a previous proffer statement, there are three options you have. You can decline to consider the modifications and go ahead as it was presented. You can continue the application to a subsequent meeting, and there would be a new public hearing based on the new proffer, or you can refer it back to the Planning Commission. I did want to alert you, though, that procedurally, there are three items on the table. One is this rezoning, which has the proffer amendment. One is the Critical Slops waiver, and the final item would be the street vacation. Mr. Armstrong's here tonight, and one option could be the following. You could hear tonight about the new proffer language, and you could at least vote on the other two items if you want to have a new public hearing on the proffer and rezoning. So that means that you could say, "Let's go ahead tonight and hear the street vacation and the Critical Slops waiver," and that would probably give the applicant a good idea of whether, if those passed or failed, that would give the applicant a good idea of whether the next meeting, he wants to have you have a new public hearing on the rezoning, or whether he would just say, "Let's, let's just vote on it tonight." I mean, I think it's, it would be probably clear to the applicant that if both of those items fail, more than likely, I would assume, he would not want to go forward with a public hearing on the other item, because procedurally and legally, they couldn't go forward. Even if you approved the rezoning without the Critical Slops waiver and the street vacation, I don't think the project would be possible. For him to complete, I know, I know he's here. Do you want to come forward, Mr. Armstrong? Is that your preference to go ahead with those other two aspects tonight?
Good evening, I'm Charlie Armstrong with Southern Development. I would be fine with that procedurally, however you all want to handle it, and if you'd like some description of what the changes were, I'd be glad to give you that as well.
I do think for the public's benefit, it would be helpful just to understand what has changed since the last time this was discussed.
Sure. All right. So the Planning Commission heard this before with a slightly different affordable housing proffer. They voted unanimously to recommend approval with that proffer. Since your last meeting, when you heard it, we have gone back and made that proffer more restrictive, and I'll describe those things. So the old proffer had an 80% AMI limit, meaning that people who made up to 80% AMI could qualify for those. The new proffer has a max of 60% AMI. That's in accordance with Habitat for Humanities procedures. They generally qualify people between 25 and 60% AMI. And I'll note that somebody from Habitat is here tonight as well, if you'd like some clarification on how their program works or anything about how they operate. The old proffer also had a 10-year minimum guaranteed affordability period. The new proffer that you have before you tonight is 40 years. 30 years was the goal we had been talking about before. We've gone well beyond that now to 40. Habitat also wants me to emphasize to you that something that's really important to them is that currently 37 out of the 52 families that are doing sweat equity toward the purchase of their Habitat home either live in CRHA properties or have a CRHA voucher. We expect and hope that some of those families will have the opportunity to purchase a home from Habitat in Flint Hill as well. That's all I have. That's the extent of the changes to that proffer, and if you have questions, I'm happy to help answer those as well.
Thank you.
Just have a, the site plan is exactly the same as what it was before, correct?
That's right.
So the form and the street layout, park arrangement, that's all the same?
Right, that's the same as what you saw before.
Can you clarify, like, the parking? Because Ms. Galvin raised some issues comparing it to another development in the city where because of the proximity of driveways, that it makes it nearly impossible for there to be street parking in that location. Can you clarify how that will be in the neighborhood you're proposing?
Sure. I believe that's probably Brookwood, but there are several places like that. Brookwood is one of our previous projects and was a learning experience for us and for the city too, I hope. One of the biggest things with Brookwood is it has no on-street parking on the steep part of the road that comes up the hill from Fifth Street extended, and the driveways to those houses are eight to 10 feet long in most cases. So a typical car, if it doesn't park in a garage, would try to park in the driveway and hang over the sidewalk. That has created some pedestrian issues. It's, it can be challenging to walk up and down that street. So the difference here is that Flint Hill, if you have the PUD plan in front of you, does have some street parking to alleviate that problem, and also has minimum 18-foot-long driveways, so that a car can park in the driveway without causing any interruption of the pedestrian experience. One other feature that this project has that I'll highlight is, instead of having individual curb cuts for driveways where if you're walking or biking or in a wheelchair, you kind of go up and down through the driveway curb cuts as you traverse the sidewalk, this uses roll-top curb, which is a seamless transition, and the sidewalk doesn't have those undulations, it stays in a level field as it goes. Does that answer your question, Ms. Hill?
Yeah, because parking was a concern. I know mine and some of the residents in the area.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
So what are we doing first?
Well, again, there are a few options based on the new proffer language. One could be to set this for a public hearing. At your next meeting, consider the PUD rezoning as well as the Critical Slops waiver and the street vacation. Another option you could have is to refer the rezoning back to the Planning Commission to consider the new proffer language. The third option is, tonight, you could take votes on the Critical Slops waiver and the street vacation, and depending on how those votes go, we'd probably ask Mr. Armstrong to come up and ask if he wants to have a public hearing on the rezoning based on the new proffer language, depending on those votes. Meaning that that gives him an idea that if this isn't going to pass, if the other two items don't pass, I would assume he probably does not want to pay for advertising and go forward again with another public hearing on a PUD rezoning that would, in effect, even if he did obtain it, it really wouldn't have any legal effect, because he wouldn't have the Critical Slops waiver or street closure. it really wouldn't have any legal effect because he wouldn't have the Critical Slops waiver or street waiver.
So is there a motion?
So are we going to move to do any of these components, just to kind of get, I mean, Mike and I, I guess, last time around, I'm pretty neutral to this project. I feel like the planning commission was a six-oh vote. I do feel that some of the questions around affordability, you know, that you had, I'm curious to what your thoughts are on, on what's put in front of us now and.
Sure, so, yeah, Mr. Armstrong, to his credit, made several attempts to try and connect with me. My schedule's been hectic, reading the reports specifically in regards to the new update for Habitat. I think it's a step forward, but for me, so it still doesn't get us to where we need to be in terms of affordable housing. And I think from your perspective, you're like, this is the furthest extent in which we can do it. And you're trying to be as creative as possible, is that accurate? Yeah, so for me, it's just, it's just, that's kind of my philosophy. I'm interested in hearing what you all think.
Mayor Walker, I mean, I still have serious reservations about it because of the kind of rezoning it is. It's called the Plan Unit Development. That's supposed to be the most innovative kind of zoning that we allow. It gives the most latitude to a developer and it expects kind of a lot of innovation. And, and it's not defined. It's up to us to insist on good, high-quality design, both in terms of the layout as well as the buildings themselves. And this, this is a, what I call a suburban townhouse development that's still very car-oriented with, even though the arrangements of the driveways and the level, leveling of the sidewalks is an improvement, it's still conflict points between pedestrians and cars as cars back out. And it, it doesn't have a multiple variety of housing types, which is specifically required in the PUD. It's all one type. That can also just generate kind of a degree of income mixing by, by the market needs as well. And I appreciate the addition of affordable housing and the depth of affordable housing is, it mitigates it. But in and of itself, it is not, and also the park itself is kind of like not very big. It's, and I understand most of the public space is a trail network that's on critical slope. I, I still don't think it's, it's the kind of development that is meant to be done under a PUD, Plan Unit Development. It could have been a rezoning to an R-three. It, it doesn't meet the bar for me in terms of being the kind of excellent placemaking that, and any, everybody of any income should be entitled to. Did you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, I spoke to Mr. Armstrong earlier today and I appreciate the, you know, working with me on the affordable housing piece. I'm, I think, you know, when we talk about how, you know, equitable communities are created and this, this one is like most of the developments that have been before us, this is still a struggle for me to see, even though you all did make the effort to, you know, work on that, the affordable housing piece. And I appreciate that. I'm still stuck with, you know, the number of units, also the location, what is being called a park space. You know, I have had just a lot of concerns, concerns with this. We had the conversation earlier about Burnett Commons and it, you know, being similar, you know, and the Habitat partnership and construction of not knowing what was Habitat property and what was your, you know, your development. So, I mean, making that effort to, I have some, you know, questions about how to make just the Habitat, Habitat model more sustainable, you know, which is outside of this, you know, conversation. So I still have a lot of questions.
Sounds like.
Can I, what, can someone explain to me what, so by, by doing the zoning change from R-one S to PUD, what, what does that enable that would not happen with R-one S with the existing zoning? What does it enable in terms of? Thank you.
Matt Offley, City Planner, Neighborhood Services. So the R-one S is our smallest single-family zone lots in the city. There's six thousand square feet. This location has already been platted. Keen Court and Flint Drive were platted years ago with existing lots. So someone could come in and just build, and grab it, I want to say, yeah, thirteen, thirteen, thirteen single-family homes. They could build both roads as platted and build thirteen single-family homes that would meet our current ordinance. You maybe even, I'm not sure the size of each lot, they maybe could be reconfigured to be a little smaller so maybe you could get one or two more homes if you kept the road layout the same. The rezoning to PUD, PUD is a higher standard. It is supposed to be for innovative design to get more density and more green space in an area. The density, actually, the, the density calculation comes out to be less than actually a single-family area because you set aside green spaces where you're clustering in townhomes. But that's, that's mainly what you get, is you, you get actually more density.
And how much more, it goes to fifty from thirteen?
Correct.
So how, okay, so setting aside the two questions, very important ones that have been raised about aesthetic quality and design, which Counselor Galvin has raised, and then the affordable housing discussion about those separate units, how would the cities study about, before, about housing generally? So we put a lot of money into the study that the group gave us a couple of years ago, which is about the supplies that we need to be aiming for of market rate housing within the city's borders. How would that evaluate this? Has anybody from staff looked, looked at that or evaluated this in light of our strategy that we're supposed to be enacting about supply? Because there was a lot of stuff that we were given, what, how should we evaluate this, given those?
That unfortunately I couldn't speak to, I don't know if our director could, but I.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because, because I feel like sitting here, I should, that's one lens for me to look at this through because we invested three hundred thousand dollars in that study, which was supposed to tell us about how to pursue supply to alleviate the supply and demand crisis that we're in.
And I'm not the director, but I will say when, because this is a question that I've thought about and I've thought about with each development. Of course, it's going to bring more housing in, but it's who's being housed, who can afford the housing.
But the point, what I remember was that, Madam, was the point of that study was that, then it's like the counterintuitive thing was you, housing being so expensive for everybody because the median rate keeps on going higher and higher when you have less supplies. So that, that's what, so like, the only way to decrease it is to increase more supply at, at that expensive rate. Because then it's just, and you're absolutely right, it doesn't go to affordable, but for the, but for the rate that's driving everybody up, so then everybody has to, is crunched who can even afford market rate? It gets worse and worse.
Yes, but when we had this discussion at the Water Street Center about this very topic, that whole, that's sort of, you know, the trickle-down thought process that won't, I don't see how that'll ever happen here. The more housing you create, the more people who can afford the housing at that level will move into it. So it has to be a strategic effort to build houses for people at the lower income levels.
But you can do, you can do both, that's not what our study said, though. Our study said you can do both. So, so it said, it said increase market rate density. And this is why we voted for the Tenth and, for the Tenth and Jefferson Project. It was because we needed, we needed rentals that were market rate to decrease the scarcity problem that was making them more expensive per unit because there's not enough, so the cost is going up and we need to do more affordable. So we needed both. But the market rate is getting much more expensive because there's not enough supply. That's at least what our study said.
So I understand what the study's saying, that's why I think it's important to, to note, this is a time who's at the table and who's a part of those discussions. Because in reality, that hasn't been, what the study is saying hasn't happened here. And it hasn't, where has it happened in the country? So when you're talking about a community like Charlottesville or any other community, the intention to displace people, to gentrify, to push people out, there was an intent to do that and that has occurred. To remedy that, which is not, I guess, necessarily the vote that we have at this point, but you have to be strategic about what's created. There is, if people can purchase property, we know who can purchase property and who can build on it and what they can do by right, I know that is often, you know, part of the conversation when individuals are trying to get us to do these rezonings. But if you're coming in, you have a developer who can build maybe thirteen to fifteen homes on a property that now can go to fifty. And out of that additional increase of thirty-five potential homes, there are five affordable units that is never going to create an equitable community if you. And so the axe there and the win on the developer's side is much greater than the benefit to the community. Now, if you have individuals come in and say, well, there are people who won't have homes, there are, there's a waiting list at CRHA, there's an argument at every angle for this. But it's, I think we have to decide what is our ultimate outcome and how we interpret those studies is one key, you know, one key factor in how this will happen. So yes, there can potentially be fifty new market rate units and I'm sure people will move into those, into those units.
I think it'd be great to hear advice from staff about this, the study. I mean, I, this, it was, I'm looking at it right now, race. Black, black stuff.
I'm sorry, I want to apologize.
I want to apologize too.
I want to apologize to that. This is not acceptable to be identifying our staff by race.
So I think that is not your, what I'll say is that interpretation of the market study, which is what is the question that's being.
The RCLCO study from two thousand.
Being asked here is, you know, I think there are several different components, like conversations going on right now, but.
RCLCO study really didn't have more details to eat. However, the study we did just last year by PES in conjunction with Smart Growth America or Fund Based Code Institute has a more specific data. For instance, they indicated that at this point in time that the city needs about three thousand, believe three thousand, three hundred and eighteen residential units in order to meet our demand right now. And by twenty-four, that number will increase from three thousand, three hundred and eighteen to four thousand plus. So that's, that's their findings. But the RCLC, the findings that they came up with wasn't very specific, it was more general in terms of the data they have. The most refined data we have right now is the one that was just completed about a year or two ago.
So I'm look, okay, so when I'm looking at the study, it says raise minimum residential business building densities in mixed-use districts. And then it says, basically it just talks about density, density bonuses. It says we need, if staff has nothing to say to council about this project that would evaluate it in light of our goals, then it sounds like there's no advice, so that, that I would not support it either. I mean, our, our goal is to deal with the housing problem that I've heard a lot about, which is a supply and demand problem. That, that, that's like why I voted, there was very strong advice a couple of years ago about the Tenth and Jefferson, which was really controversial because the neighborhood didn't want it, but we voted for it because we wanted to get more density near the downtown malls that costs would go down. That was the whole goal, market rate rental. But if there's no advice from staff about this on just the.
I think every, every production, you know, you know, the, 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 in terms of development, the most critical terms that developers look at, it's the pro forma. You know, regardless of whether they have to dedicate X number of units, as affordable units, they have to look at, you know, whether the development makes sense to them financially. You know, they have to take that into consideration. And however, if we, if we have to exact or require developers to increase the number of affordable units, this is a practical fact, then there has to be a certain amount of subsidy, you know, either provided by the local government in form of incentives or density bonus that you talked about a little, a few minutes ago, in order to make the development cost-effective for the developer, you know. However, I think, given the, the situation we have here in Charlottesville, every little bit of housing produce, I think, increases the supply of, whether it's affordable housing or, or market rate housing in the city, you know. But I'm not trying to be an advocate for the development community. However, if you want to increase or incentivize the development community to increase affordable housing, there are several ways the city can, can do it. Either through negotiation, through incentive or density bonuses, like you said, and, and the other form of subsidy layering in order to make the development a potentially palatable to the development community.
I mean, I think it's pretty clear, even if you're talking about what, I mean, this conversation came up with West Second Street, how many units, how many market rate families would move into it? What is the, you know, potential revenue from the real estate tax, new members in the community and the economic impact on them being in the community, eating, purchasing? I mean, every, we have this conversation, every conversation. I just think when, if, if, and this is not, again, my area of expertise. I haven't, I haven't built anything out of popsicle sticks, so I'm still working on this. But I just think if you ask for, you know, the rezoning, which, you know, ends up getting you a boost of thirty-five units, there has to be a more equitable conversation in this mix if you're talking about just from the affordable, you know, housing piece for that, for you to request that rezoning. Somewhere in the discussions about your return on investment, I think that it would include, but that's just, you know, how my world works, what, you know, the give-back is and is, so I've been weighing when having, you know, this discussion, you know, is five sufficient?
So do we have the, sorry, I was just wondering, like.
And I'm just trying to understand, so, so Mayor Walker's rate, like, the, the question is, is this the right percentage? Is this the right number? And, and Counselor Signer is saying, how do we know what that right number is? And that's what I'm hearing and that's why we wanted to see if there's, and, and we desperately need this housing strategy.
Yeah.
And it's not here in our hands yet, because that would answer your question, I think. You know, Mr. Signer, is that we, we need to know what those strategies are, when, where, how much? When do we use what tool? How much can the private sector really do on its own? How much can we then afford to buy for land trust to really be deeply, deeply affordable? And, and that's what I'm hearing is that right now it's, it's just shooting in the dark, just build more units, build more units. And I, and I share, Mayor. And I, and I share, uh, Mayor Walker's concern, y- you could just be inflating land value, you could just be inflating the market. And so we don't have all the information we need yet, but we, we have to still keep moving, and we still have to still make decisions. And so I've, I've made my decision based on quality of life and livability criteria, um, as well as affordable housing, but I, I think there's, density alone doesn't provide us with affordable housing. And density alone certainly doesn't give us with highly livable communities. So that, to me, it's not just density.
Yeah.
And we've had that conversation too, uh, um, with, you know, call to abuse, that development.
Yes, yes, yes.
Which would have been...
That was a hundred percent affordable.
So to that point, I mean, it seems as if there's not support, so do we need to make a, a motion to deny, or...
I, I think if you'd like to make a motion to deny both the street closing and critical slopes waiver, and then that would, that would inform what to do with the rezoning application with the new proffers.
Okay.
Is that your preference?
Well, I'm, I move to deny, uh, the critical slopes and the street closure.
Okay, a second.
All right, please vote. All right, carries five to zero.
Okay, if, if I could ask Mr. Armstrong to come forward, um, in light of that, would you just prefer the council now just vote on the original proffers?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so this, the next vote would be, uh, either a motion to approve or deny the rezoning that is before you without the amended proffers, with the original proffers.
Ms. Galvin, would you like to make a...
So, the idea is that we're voting to deny the original proffers.
Right, the rezoning with the original...
Which are associated with the rezoning to a PUD.
Yes.
I move to deny the rezoning to a PUD with the original proffers.
A second.
All right, please vote. All right, carries five to zero. All right, next we have the, um, resolution authorizing submittal of the preliminary information form for Riverview Farm and the Carr Greer Farmhouse, Ivy Creek Natural Area, first of one reading.
Madam Mayor, I don't see Mr. Warner, I'm happy to present if, if that's your preference, to keep this moving.
Okay.
Okay. Um, before you now is a resolution to authorize a submittal for what's called a preliminary information form, um, for the Riverview Farm and the Carr Greer Farmhouse, um, which is colloquially known as the Ivy Creek National, Natural Area, um, concerning this proposal. What this really does is, it's a letter that, uh, this council and the Board of Supervisors is being asked to approve, and it would ask the Virginia Department of Human, of Historic Resources to start a study to see whether this should be placed on either the state's register of historical places, or possibly include the net, include, there's, Mr. Warner, you can...
Here I am. Thought I timed that right, apologies. Um, just here to talk about, uh, the resolution on, um, the Carr Greer Farmstead, and, uh, I know it's getting late, so I just would ask, do you all have any questions about what's being requested?
Like that.
Make a motion. Okay. Mayor Walker, I would like to move to adopt the resolution in support of nominating Riverview Farm and the Carr Greer Farmhouse, Ivy Creek Natural Area, for listing on the Virginia Landmarks Register and a National Register of Historic Places.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Please vote. All right. Thank you very much. All right. All right, now we have a report from the Police Civilian Review Board, um...
Take a break.
Okay, we're gonna take a quick break, okay, sorry, five minutes.
All right, I call this meeting back to order.
My last one. I never even mind.
All right, now we'll have the members of the initial civilian review board to come up and give a presentation.
We are Guillermo Bia, Josh Bowers, Katrina Turner, Rosia Parker, and Ms. Gloria Beard, who we will kindly wait for.
I waited on me. I sat down too long and I should be. It made me so upset. No.
Okay. First of all, we want to thank all of you for -- we're not getting you these slides for a little bit, Mayor Walker, if you do want to sit. We're not going to get to this for a little bit, so I don't want to make you stand for longer than you have to. We wanted to extend our thanks and gratitude for passing this resolution in the first place, for recognizing the need, and for entrusting civilians to do this work. Actually spoke with one of the trainers from NACOLL on the phone today, and she told me that three other cities have followed the lead of Charlottesville in passing resolutions in the way -- (applause) -- passing resolutions in the way that our city council did to ask civilians to do this work, and to do it quickly, and to address the need, and in a way that takes care and takes the time that it needs, but does so efficiently and doesn't, you know, drag on. Some of these processes can take seven, 10, 15, 20 years to create. So I'm just going to do a sort of brief introduction. On July 2nd, we delivered our final proposal materials to city council, to the chief of police, to the city attorney, and to the city manager. The materials are available for the public on our website, which is through the city's webpage, if anybody's available. Or if anybody has not read those materials, we invite you to do that. What we presented to city council last month was our cover letter, which we will be reading to you all tonight. Some proposed ordinance language, which would empower both the civilian review board and oversight staff to do its work. Proposed bylaws, under which we believe the CRB portion of this oversight model should operate. We attached the original resolution from city council to make part of the record that, you know, the city has acknowledged the need for this oversight, and has asked us to do this work of developing this model. We also included our recommendations for what we could see the next steps to be. We recognize this is in your hands, our board is no longer functioning, and while we're all here to continue to assist in whatever ways you need, we are not a functioning, you know, we're not a functioning board at this time, and there is no current CRB. So we wanted to give you all some recommendations of next steps, because we recognize you all will be having to take this under your wings in a way that we're sort of passing it off. We also included an overview of our police oversight model, which Guillermo will be addressing a little bit tonight, and a memo about the importance of creating memorandum of understanding with the police department, which helps the CRB and the police department understand the parameters under which they are operating and working. We included some memos about the staff positions that we're recommending. So we are recommending an auditor and an executive director to be the professionalized side of this, as well as a seven-person CRB, to serve three-year terms each. We've also included some data in there about the importance of these staffed positions being independent of the police department. We've made a budgetary request and presented our budget research. We've provided with some other CRBs to review. I think that was a counselor's suggestion from our joint session, was to give some other models and some other CRBs across the country, so that you all can have a little bit of a sense of some of the other models that are out there. And we received some letters of support from community members, from community agencies, and from the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. So this evening, we are not going to spend a lot of time rehashing those materials. They're lengthy, there's -- we submitted 60 pages. I'm sure you all have had a chance to read those, and so we want to leave as much time as we can for you all to ask questions of us, and give us, you know, whatever feedback or information you think would be valuable, and we'd be happy to assist you as you all are making these decisions. So we plan to read our cover letter to you, which describes our efforts over the past year, and probably more importantly, describes sort of what we see as being the next steps toward building permanent and effective oversight of the Charlottesville Police Department. And we'll all sort of take turns doing that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Katrina Turner.
Dear city councilors, thank you for entrusting us with the important work of developing a permanent police civilian review board. The community called for increased transparency and accountability within the Charlottesville Police Department, and your commitment to a CRB is one important step towards meeting that demand. In this packet, you will find a proposal for the next steps of establishing this permanent CRB. The initial CRB envisions that this will be an iterative process that will change and grow to meet the needs of the community and the CPD. Our work has been only the first step in this, in that evolution. Here's our bottom-line conclusion: To demonstrate a long-term and comprehensive commitment to transparent police oversight, equitable policing, and accountability, the initial CRB recommends that you establish a diverse and inclusive permanent CRB to be assisted and supported by two full-time staff members.
We've spent the last year researching boards around the country, learning about different models of oversight, seeking and obtaining personalized training, talking to police oversight practitioners all around the country, securing presentations from the Legal &amp; Justice Center, the People's Coalition, and the Charlottesville Police Department, engaging in communications with city council, meeting with Mr. Blair, our city attorney, meeting with Mr. Platania, our commonwealth attorney, requesting police information and data directly relevant to our charge, determining how an oversight body could best address the problematic police practices that were identified in your 2017 resolution, and meeting with Chief of Police Brackney, engaging with the community, developing a model and mission statement, initiating the process of negotiating memorandum of understanding with the CPD, and drafting the attached documents for your review and vote. We've listened to the community, from activists to officers, and we've appreciated input from everyone. And we've not suggested, we've not accepted every suggestion or demand. Some of them were not legally tenable or politically practical, and others were inconsistent with genuine independent oversight. And we know we cannot please all stakeholders, but we are confident that we have delivered on each element of our charge, as stated in your resolution.
We began our work as a group of seven civilian volunteers. City council added an eighth member to our board, and over the course of the year, two more board members resigned their post. Most of us did not know each other prior to our terms, but we came to learn that each one of us has unique skills, abilities, and perspective that served us well throughout the year. We're proud of the working relationship we developed and of the work product we generated. After our first meeting, we hit the ground running by dividing into subspecialties. Board members focused efforts on, one, research, two, drafting, three, community engagement, four, liaisoning with the CPD, and five, liaisoning with the city. We rotated chairperson and secretary in an effort to ensure that all members were involved, engaged, and had an opportunity to lead. We rotated which board members spoke with the media. We developed interim bylaws that were intended to, one, define the parameters of how the initial CRB would operate, and, two, provide us access to the data and documents necessary for a CRB to meaningfully serve an oversight role. Unfortunately, those bylaws were never voted upon by the city council, but the process was informative and valuable nonetheless.
We were also fortunate to receive a one-day tailored training session from NACOLL, the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, and we appreciate the city's financial support to make that training a reality. With NACOLL's guidance and our own research, we began the work of tailoring bylaws and an ordinance for a permanent CRB that could meet the specific needs of the city of Charlottesville and its community. We have shared our drafts and proposals with the public and the city throughout our drafting process, just as we share our final work product with you all today. As you know, the past year has not always been a smooth road, yet we would all willingly do it over again, because this work is larger than this board or any individual member. In the end, this enterprise is about the crucial work of improving community-police relations through systemic change.
Through this process, we have identified the following elements as critical to successful oversight. Number one, the need for a CRB with independent authority to review any and all complaints about police misconduct. Number two, the need for a CRB with independent authority to conduct a parallel investigation into a complaint, at least under limited circumstances. Number three, the need for a CRB with independent authority to assess fully relevant CPD documents and data. Number four, the need for professional experienced support staff and an appropriate corresponding budget. We have recommended 1% of the CPD's budget. And number five, the need for public engagement and public reporting. Without these critical elements, the CRB would risk creating more harm for this community rather than less.
What follows are our suggestions for next steps. First, the initial CRB has requested an opportunity to present our proposal to city council at your earliest convenience. After our presentation, we expect that at least one member of the city council will need to take this project under their wing, given that our terms end on July 2nd, 2019. But please know that all of us are available in the future to answer questions and provide assistance, even after our terms officially end. Second, part of this packet is a draft ordinance designed to authorize a CRB and professional staff to conduct their work. We understand that the city attorney will adopt a final ordinance at council's request, but we hope and expect that the city attorney will use our draft as a template. Third, after enacting the ordinance, the city council will need to approve and pass CRB bylaws, a draft of which are also included in this package, and ensure that adequate monies are provided for in the next budget allocation cycle. Fourth, the city council will need to appoint a new CRB, and the city manager will need to hire an experienced skilled staff. Although it may be difficult for the new CRB to start its work prior to the hiring of oversight staff, it is critical that the city council first appoint the new CRB, so its members may participate in the hiring of the oversight staff. Fifth, each new class of CRB members will need to receive adequate training by support staff, city staff, and the CPD, and the outside entities. Sixth, first iteration of the permanent CRB must be empowered to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the CPD soon as possible, in an effort to develop the parameters under which all stakeholders can operate. Additional steps and substeps are described in this packet. And of course, these last steps and substeps must be completed, consistent with the CRB bylaws and the city's enabling ordinance. Thank you for the opportunity to develop this important board for our community.
So as Sarah said, the document that we delivered to you all is about 60 pages, and it's really pretty dense. And in the course of the past year, we've created close to 700 different documents that led to the final work product that we're presenting. So instead of sort of getting into the weeds of all of that tonight, we wanted to start off with a little overview of how we see, of what we see as independent and effective police oversight for Charlottesville. So the way we see it are going to break it out into sort of three different arms. The first arm is the civilian review board, supported by the executive director, which is a staffed position. That's the arm that will intake civilian complaints. That's the arm that will give people someplace to go outside of the police department to lodge a complaint. That's the part the review board will meet regularly, will decide to, if it wants to hold a hearing based on the complaint, will listen to the complaint to make sure the complaint feels heard, and would also direct the executive director to perform an independent investigation if it feels it's necessary. So that, the trees part, we don't want to miss out on the forest, and that's sort of arm two for the police auditor. Because this, the problems that we're facing aren't just individuals, it's systemic, so we need to be able to look at overall trends. And that's what the police auditor, a staffed position, would do. Would receive data, look at data, analyze the data, and look for overall patterns and make policy recommendations. And then put all of that together, we want this to be a collaborative effort. So outreach and engagement is an important part of what we're presenting, that's arm three. So we see the civilian review board, the executive director, the police auditor, along with the police in the community, coming together on a regular basis to be able to talk to each other, to be able to hear what people are saying, for everyone to be able to meet regularly to discuss what's happening. And then reporting is an important part of that. One of the things that we found during the course of the past year is that having year after year reports is important to sort of see what's happening with the success of the review board, of the police, of the community engagement. So reporting is sort of a part of the outreach and engagement. So we know that this is a marathon and not a sprint, and we wanted to sort of emphasize what we saw were the next steps to get to where we are today, to get to what we believe is effective police oversight for Charlottesville. So by the end of the year, calendar year this year, steps to be completed would be to work on the enabling ordinance, ordinance and pass ordinance, for the city to pass the board's bylaws, and for the city council to publicly recruit and start selecting board members consistent with the process required by the enabling ordinance. It's important for monetary funds to be a part of this process. So in the 2020 budget cycle, the city to allocate funds, and what we heard from NACOLL was 1% of the police department is becoming sort of a standard trend, so we would hope to see that in next year's budget cycle. For the city to create job descriptions for the professional oversight staff, and to recruit and hire oversight staff, consistent with the processes in the ordinance, and then for the board members to complete training. And then for the first half of the 2020 calendar year, physical offices and location, again to give civilians someplace outside of the police department to go to make complaints, city and oversight staff to organize and coordinate training for the new board members, board members to negotiate and enter into an MOU with the chief of police, board members to decide on meeting dates, frequency, and then to begin the work of civilian oversight.
We didn't want to put everybody to sleep, but we hoped that we could put everything in a nice little neat package for you, and then answer the questions that you all have.
So first, I would just like to say thank you. It's been a really rocky year, but this is a lot of work. And it's difficult work, and anything that's different and kind of a change agent is, you know, hard. So thank you for the effort that you all put in, put into this. I'll just talk briefly, you know, to start about what the timeline, I think, on our part would look like, and you all can weigh in. I think over the next two months, we'll probably have a series of two-two-ones with council and city manager, city attorney, and the chief of police, and also some individual meetings with the city attorney in September. Is that, has that been scheduled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you want to talk about that?
Well, it's not been scheduled yet, but in terms of September, we do hope to have a work session in which we want to invite perhaps some members of the Fairfax civilian review board and staff up there to provide some insight on what a CRB in Virginia does and looks like, to kind of give the counselors a flavor of, okay, this is what a CRB will be doing once you appoint it.
And so that will be by September, and I think by that point, we should have, between the draft that you all have given us and those, you know, additional meetings, that we should have something to present by the first meeting in October to the community. I would like to say that over, since we received, we've been able to review it individually, but our retreat last week was the first time that we had been together since the first meeting in July. And a lot, I think all the counselors besides, except myself, had been in and out of town, you know, most of the month, so we hadn't had the opportunity to meet to discuss the draft that you, that you all gave us. So this is the first, the first time, the first time for that. I will volunteer in terms of the capacity for a council member to take it on. I am interested, but if there's someone else that is, you know, interested in that, then that's fine, too.
If you need support, just let us know.
Let me say thank you guys for your hard work. It's been a long year, but again, as Mayor Walker echoed, or excuse me, stated, you guys put a great deal of work into this, and looking forward to us discussing it further.
Honestly, thanks, too. I think that the depth here involving NACOLL, I think, is really terrific, the way that you guys have worked, and it's been obvious how we've interacted with you and seen you, and it seems like it's really, really thoughtfully put together, and I think that's important for us and it's important for the community, so I'm also looking forward to making the final decisions, but I think that it's in a, it looks really, it looks in good shape right now.
Again, I just want to thank you. It definitely is an awful lot of work you've done, and you met every single part of the charge from the original resolution, so thank you so much. You've given us an awful lot to work with, so now it is our job to work hard and understand the depth of this, your strategy, and your components of every bit of your work, as well as you do. And it's good that Mr. Blair and Dr. Richardson, and with the police chief, will all be working together, because I do, I do agree with you, the goal is to improve community-police relations through understanding the implications of a systemic race of society. So I appreciate what you've done, and this is to make us all be on the same page. That's, we need a good, well-functioning police department. We have a very good police department. Who do you go to when something happens? And you look at what happened in other parts of the country this weekend. We absolutely must be working together. And I want to thank the police chief for being in the room with us tonight, and we will be working together with the community to make this happen. Thank you for being groundbreaking.
And I just, I don't want to be remiss to say, like, it's just, it's clear, like, the tremendous work that's gone into it, and as Nikaya indicated, it's been a process, and we've seen you kind of go through your own growing pains to get to this, but the output here is just, it's more than a template for us to work from. I mean, not saying that we don't have questions and that we're going to go through a lot of conversations, but, I mean, I've learned a lot just through the process of watching you all work through this, as well as just obviously the amount of output that's come from this group. So thank you very much for your commitment, and we continue, we will certainly continue to lean on you in the weeks ahead as we continue to kind of wrestle through this, recognizing you're not in a formal capacity, but appreciate your willingness to continue to be a resource in that way.
That was all I was going to say.
That was all I was going to say, is in the next, in the next month, as you're going through this, there, there is a lot of strategy that has been, and a lot of thought being put into it, and we'd be happy to answer those questions or be involved in any of those meetings that you're talking about having.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to bring something to you.
The microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, as you know, we had our last meeting on June 1st, 2019, to finish our CRB bylaws. Our term has come to a close. It has been an exciting and rewarding experience for us as we worked diligently to compose and create the bylaws, and which we hope that are accepted and in order to create a working and transparent relationship with the CPD and the Charlottesville community. I'm asking for each CP, uh, CRB member to be considered for a small stipend if there is any funds left in our budget. We would greatly appreciate, we would greatly appreciate, wait a minute, your consideration. It was an honor to have been given the opportunity to create these documents for a civilian review board, in hope that it create a better relationship between the Charlottesville Police Department and the citizens of Charlottesville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
We, we have one more item, and then it'll be other comments. So now we have the Unity Days report.
You were saying something?
No, I was, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Brian Wheeler, Director of Communications, and along with Charlene Green, runs our Human Rights Office. We've been the two lead staff working on the program portion of this first-ever Unity Days.
Great job.
We have some friends and members of the Action Committee in the audience, and we're glad they're here to support this. Tonight, our goal is to give you some information and the public some information about the program, and also invite Chief Brackney to talk about the public safety process. So first, I'll go into some of the events that have been scheduled, and just see if you have any questions about that, and Charlene Green and I will be happy to vet those questions. So, as you know, Unity Days was approved by city council in February as a city-sponsored but community-driven series of events, and we've scheduled more than 80 events in the course of the four months of Unity Days this year. The goal, to educate and inspire and honor people in our community to move towards economic and racial justice. So the Action Committee, 19 citizen members, has been meeting every two weeks since March, when they volunteered to be part of this process. We want to thank them for their hard work and their energy and passion and enthusiasm about the projects that they've been reviewing and putting forward themselves. Again, we're going to share some information about the schedule in the next few slides, but I also want to remind you and the community that on Wednesday evening in City Space on August 7th, we'll have the second of our community briefings. So if there are members of the public who want to come and ask a question directly of our city manager, Chief Brackney, or myself, we'll be there to take those questions. So a quick look at some of the events coming up this week for Unity Days. We're going to start with a ballet performance on the downtown mall, and we'll go right into Fridays After Five. You know, that's been canceled the past two years, so one of our goals this year was to have Fridays After Five, but also have the city market on Saturday morning. Saturday, August 10th, there'll be a lot more going on, starting in the morning at Market Street Park with a Quaker worship service. There'll be a brass ensemble in Market Street Park, starting maybe around 10, but definitely by 11:00 AM to noon. And we've had this Monticello to Main Street tour that's been happening on many weekends throughout the summer. That will have another tour starting on Saturday about 11:00 AM in Court Square. First United Methodist Church will have a reception following the brass ensemble. There'll be some film screenings, there'll be interactive art on the downtown mall. You talked about the Ivy Creek Natural Area tonight, there'll be another event there that's been another repeating event throughout the summer. The big event of the weekend, as far as number of people expected to attend, is the Seaville Sing Out at the Pavilion from 4:00 to 6:00. So we're thankful to Kirby Hutto and the Sprint Pavilion for making that venue available to us for the weekend, and that'll be the big event on Saturday. Sunday, August 11th, there'll be another service at First United Methodist Church on the steps of the, the church there at 7:00 AM. Our big event that day will be the Call to Action Resource Fair in Market Street Park from 1:00 to 5:00. In the packet for the council meeting tonight, we showed you some of the nonprofits that will be in the tents at the Call to Action Resource Fair. That'll be from 1:00 to 5:00. Monday, August 12th, Fourth Street will definitely be closed, in fact, it'll be closed throughout the whole weekend, along with the Second Street crossing the downtown mall. That, that will wrap up the August 9th through 12th activities. Now, there was so much enthusiasm about bringing this community back together and also doing some fun events that we expanded into the next weekend, so August 17th and 18th, we have other events planned besides the Back to School Bash at the Pavilion, which is not a Unity Days event, but that's an important milestone. We'll be having a family-friendly block party at Washington Park. There's a film screening, The Overcomer is the name of the film, and that'll be at the Regal Stonefield. And then Sunday, August 18th, is the Maid in Charlottesville Reclaim Concert at Tonsler Park. So those are some additional events the committee championed and that we invested in, thanks to the funds that city council provided. Is it one of those? All right. We also went into the last week of August, Wednesday, August 28th, there's a workshop at City Space. Thursday, August 29th, Charlene's referring to this documentary, At the Paramount. All of this information is available on the city's website at charlottesville.org/unitydays.
It's also important to point out that in September, the Charlottesville Police Department, and the chief can speak to that, will have their, their night out event that is usually, I think, a little earlier, and it's going to be in September.
So with that, we'll invite the chief up.
Thank you, and building on that theme is exactly right. We moved the Seaville Night Out, that traditionally is held in August, right around this same weekend, to wrap up the, the entire summer of unity, so that we're now calling that the Seaville Unity Night Out, so that we'll bring everyone back together as an opportunity to continue and then put the final mark on it, on how we've decided to reclaim Charlottesville as well. When we talk about security and what the footprint looks like for security, this is a very different venue in that there are locations of events occurring throughout the city and not in a single space like we've had in this, in the years past. Based on the fact that we now have an ordinance in which we've claimed the parks and certain streets through the remainder or through infinity, it has helped us now with how the footprint will look in terms of safety and security downtown. Because the city has claimed the spaces for the parks, and there's no competing permits, then the perimeters are very different. We can have very open perimeters now, with the streets being closed, very similar to Friday After Five on Fourth and Second Street, and just leaving it open so that we can have a very festival-like atmosphere. People can come down and enjoy the amenities, the ballet, the sing-outs, and things of that nature. Are, without giving all the specifics, the police presence that you'll see will be a lot of bicycles. We've had the officers now all, will pretty much be on bicycles between ourselves, UVA, Abilmaro, and some of the other universities, very similar to the profile that we put in place for the NCAA Final Four and for the actual championship games. That'll also be supplemented by motorcycles and foot patrols, in which the officers will be on foot at these venues and on the exteriors of these venues. So there's not the secure perimeter that was set up before, so people can come and go. Because there's no ordinance and there's no state of emergencies, there's also no declarations about items that are prohibited in the, the pedestrian mall area, with the exception that some of these are going to be at private venues, so they, they can put in restrictions to what you can bring into their private venues, and we will support and assist in those ways. At this point in time, we really don't have anything that would cause us to pause in terms of direct intelligence. However, we always have to be mindful that the events of this past weekend remind us to be ever vigilant that these things happen and can happen anywhere again. So we will always have a very nimble footprint to respond to any incidents that may occur here. It will be a quick response, but at the exact same time, a very soft presence throughout the entire weekend, following into the next weekends, and then finishing up in September.
Thank you, chief.
Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions to the committee?
Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you to the unity.
Yeah, just a lot of, a lot of gratitude, thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of good work.
And again, the, the Action Committee has been phenomenal to work with.
And thanks to the Action Committee.
And we've, you know, in, to some degree, it's been participatory budgeting on a fast track, in that, that you made this investment in their work, and they, as a committee, allocated those funds, and, and I think did so in a very thoughtful manner.
And I forget, how much did we allocate for this?
So you allocated $100,000, and about $24,000 was for marketing, and $76,000 for program.
Thank you, thank you.
And again, there'll be a public briefing Wednesday, 6:00 PM at City Space.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, any other business?
I have one item, Mayor Walker, from earlier, as Ms. Hudson brought up her request via email, and we touched, we touched on it during that public comment session. I'm interested in supporting such as there, I'll be, I'm interested to hear if there's any other support from my colleagues about supporting her, her funding request for the talent that she's looking to bring for one of the Unity Day events.
So for that event, right now, there is allocation of funding, programming already from?
It is.
Mr. Wheeler, how much is that?
So the, the reclaim concert has been allocated $15,000 from the program budget.
And what's like the range of amounts that people have received for programming?
You know, it's ranged from $100 to $15,000, and that is the highest amount.
So do you want to just come up, just so the public can have the details of the request?
Yeah, let me go ahead and break this $15,000 down, because your police department is charging me for security, so I'm covering my, my security.
Your request.
My request? Oh, I thought she wanted a budget rundown, since that was her question, so I was just willing to give it to her. But yeah, the request is, is, I mean, you guys gave $80,000 to the DBA for marketing, so you're up here actually questioning and doing something for people of color, which you've never done before. Like, nobody has ever brought a request to say, look, this is what we want to do for the black community. My request is simple, I want to bring talent to the park, this is a free concert, hopefully this will continue every year, this will be something that we'll do in a neighborhood that is for us, designated for us. I mean, you funded a lot of things, but it hasn't necessarily been for the neighborhoods that you long done wrong. I mean, y'all just have done black people so wrong in this city for so long. Again, to answer your question about the money that has been allocated, a majority of that is going to be for security anyway. So your police officers, Chief Brackney, is he, I believe it's what, $45 an hour? I have to pay for off-duty cops to work? That's what Tito told me. It's about $40, $40, $40 to $45 an hour to have them even work security. So I'm asking for eight police officers, then I'm paying Millennium Security, that's about $2,000, and I'm only at six people, and I think we moved that number up, was it eight? So I have to add two more people to Millennium Security. That was already at $1,500, so that's going to be an additional $2,000 for security. But I'm, safety is first for me, so I'm more concerned about safety for everybody else as well. So it's a lot of things that I have to pay for where the programming hasn't even fully been paid for at this point. And I don't want black people or any talent come and thinking that what they're doing, that they have to do it for free. We long do stuff for free in this town, anyway. That, that, that ends in 2019. Black people should be compensated when they do stuff, period. Everybody else do it. And then you gave away, regardless of who was sitting up on council, you gave away $80,000 for the Downtown Business Association to do marketing. They're in every Bloomberg magazine, they're in every Charlottesville guy, they're in every, every little piece of, we could walk outside right now, that's just a book right downstairs. All downtown businesses have marketing. So, I mean, I'm happy to answer y'all's questions, but the $15,000 is definitely gone.
So the request, or the talent, can you talk a little bit more about?
About that?
Yes.
Oh, well, you know, I had to give my argument out first. But anyway, yes, it's a celebrity that is coming here, by the name of Wale, if you haven't heard of his music. We all got these little devices right here, you can YouTube it, he's a big star, he's from DC, and DC stood with us in solidarity when we were going through, we were going through during the summer hate, and DC is experiencing something right now where they're trying to mute GoGo in DC, which is a form of music created by people of color. And so I think it would just be nice for us to reciprocate the love back to DC and show some love for DC, the way they showed love for us when we were going through, we were going through in the summer hate.
But the request is, is how much?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five hundred or thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand, and there's enough money in the equity fund for you to do this. I come to these meetings, I pay attention. Or we can pull it out, the same money you got, the $80,000 for the DBA, however you want to do it.
So let me, let me help you out here, Ms. Hudson. What I think you're saying, tell me if I'm wrong, is that due to the nature of this event and the caliber of the artists, and you have to pay for the talent and lights and so forth, you're asking the council essentially, approve your budget request because it's essentially an extenuating circumstance. It's not normal in which we bring artists of this caliber here, specifically for Unity Day. And this artist has stated that he wants to come because of the tough events and whatnot.
He wants to come.
Okay, so I think, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a couple of responses. One is that I think that the precedent, we would want to know, like, we have an RFP when we go over $5,000 for anything, because the city, we're spending taxpayer funds, needs to know that there's some process. And in this case, there's a negotiation happening with the artist for whatever rate they're charging. The city with taxpayer funds has to have, and I'm sure that's what Mr. Richardson would advise us if we ask him, and so I, that, that's just one concern. I just have to say, Ms., and I'm sure that you'll yell at me about this, but we have done, as I remember, at least three off-budget substantial allocations. Daughters of Zion, we gave $80,000 to, we funded the, the pilgrimage, I think that was 50, or maybe more, and then we just did an off-budget request for the minority business office that we established of, I think, $50,000 just now. So we, we are trying to do projects that are substantial, and when you stand there and say we don't do anything for this population or these neighbors, it does.
Do you know who went on the pilgrimage, Mike? More white people than black people.
Okay, but...
I mean, but when you talk like that, just make sure you're looking at the...
But, but, but you're saying we're doing nothing. That's what you just said.
Once again, when you talk about what you do...
And then we just did an off-budget request for the minority business office that we established of, I think, fifty thousand dollars just now. So we are trying to do projects that are substantial, and when you stand there and say, "We don't do anything for this population or these neighbors," it does.
Do you know who went on the pilgrimage, Mike? More white people than black people.
Okay, but...
I mean, but when you talk like that, just make sure you're looking at the...
But you're saying we're doing nothing. That's what you just said.
Once again, when you talk about what you do...
You said we're doing nothing. So I'm just saying, it's not that convincing of an argument.
You have to look at who is going on these trips and who is attending this stuff. That's what I'm saying.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, we could do that all day. We could talk about that all day.
So I think the pilgrimage was a good trip, and I think it was a pretty mix.
It was a good trip, but there was still a lot of white people.
But I would think it was a mix, too.
I mean, I'm just being real. Let's talk facts.
So, um, did you show up?
Did I?
Okay. No, I was looking at that. So Wes, your proposal is for this to...
I'm sorry. Yeah, as you, I mean, there's a lot of people that would really like to see Wale. I think that from, from a public perspective, and specifically for Unity Days, there's been a lot of events, excuse me, there are a lot of events, but I think this one is more so targeted to a specific population that normally doesn't have these kind of artists specifically of this caliber come in, and these artists require funding, to say the least. And I think this is a good, it's an effort, it's a good faith effort from the council, coming from the equity fund or whichever pot we choose to use, to make this a substantial event specifically for Unity Days. I think if we had an artist like Wale come to Tonsla Park, especially for Unity Days, like, it's definitely going to be an event. Like, Charlottesville will not forget that. So I know the community, and especially the folks who don't normally come to these meetings, would be very appreciative. And as Ms. Hudson alluded to, there's significant costs.
And there's a narrative of Charlottesville that you guys, I feel that a lot of you are in denial about. Every time we see anything about August eleventh and twelfth, you completely displaced the people of color that played a role. Black women have completely been disrespected, drenched, starting with our mayor. I mean, you don't even respect her, Kathy Galvin. Why are you looking around the room? You don't even respect her. I mean, like, it's just so much stuff that August the twelfth really has been, from the news just telling the story wrong, to just, we really just have to put a narrative out there to the world that black people really do reside in Charlottesville. Do you know how many people think that we don't exist? Do you know how many people come here and be like, "I don't know how y'all live here, y'all don't have nothing." We wonder why we can't have black teachers? There's nothing to do. Do you know the narrative of what this event could do for the city and do for people of color that do have a thought process that maybe I want to come to Charlottesville? But on the other side of their mind, they think, "I really don't want to go there because it's racist."
Yeah, I think.
Can I ask a question, please? When has the city ever paid for a for-profit entertainer?
Last year, we had Sniders. This year, we're just trying to get a rapper.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, I mean, this is a, this is, this is a for, I'm just asking the question, has, I can't remember...
Simple concert.
This is, it is, this is an entertainer that makes a profit, and we are going to be subsidizing a person to come. It's not a volunteer organization, it's not a nonprofit. This is unusual.
You gave New Hill five hundred thousand.
That, this is not a nonprofit organization. This is a for-profit celebrity.
Okay, can we have the presenter and then council?
I just have a question. Have we ever done that?
And I can say for myself, I mean, this is something that I've even asked a lot of questions about, so it's not just the other counselors have questions. I had questions that I asked Counselor Bellamy about when the initial dollar amount was decided and determined, why wasn't that money put towards this artist? I've asked those questions. I have two requests that I haven't brought up yet, one from the Winnebago Foundation for Travel, that we will, for individuals to Africa, and another one from the Jefferson School to, you know, create the curriculum. Now, all of these are going to come around the same time, and so they are competing, and I just want to make sure that, and we should not understand the conversations around having to, you know, compete, you know, for funding for things, but, I mean, I am struggling with this one a bit, not even outside of those two, those two allocations. So I don't think it's just, I mean, they, I have asked questions, so I'm just saying publicly that I'm asked, that I've asked them.
I think there's nothing wrong with the question piece, but I do think the significance of when we're talking about setting a cultural precedent and changing the narrative, as we're always discussing, and which we want to do, this sends a significant message to that particular population. Specifically, one point that Ms. Hudson made, that I do think is poignant, a lot of black folk don't want to come here because, A, the consistent thing, I mean, we've heard it from Ms. Beer, what is there for us to do? And then she said it earlier, is it going to be for us? Like, that, that element of it, that ranges from when you're super young to the time in which you're older. What is it for us to do? This is an opportunity for us to have something specific for them. And then secondly, if we're talking about attracting, but not only attracting, but retaining diversity here in this community, we have to be able to put forth events that's going to allow them to say, "Hey, that's a place I would want to go to, and it's something that I want to do." This is an opportunity for us to do such. We can have tons of educational events, but you can't deny the social aspect of it. And the social piece is really what makes a lot of people leave, or they just not show up in the first place.
And I'm not denying the social aspect, although positives there, I'm just, I'm hesitant to understand that it's the city's responsibility to play for the entirety of that artist. Thirty-five thousand dollars for an event that happens next week, this just came up this weekend, there has been no input. I just, I want to make sure that we're putting those dollars to the greatest, you know, uses, especially when it's coming from the equity fund, back into the community. I think there's a lot of private partners who would be willing to participate in the fundraising for such an event. Obviously, we're on a tight timeline.
We ask them.
Well, I think...
I just don't think it's...
So I think in regards to that question, which is valid, but I think when we talk about like, the dollars being allocated to a specific kind of event, that's essentially what the Unity Fund is for. So, I mean, if we're, if we're using that scale, the Unity Fund is to put on specific events. She's asking for funding for an event.
Right, and she went through the process and got fifteen thousand dollars for her event.
And it wasn't enough?
And it was saying, and it was told in council, if you needed more, you would have to come back to council and ask. Was that, is that not how it went at the initial meeting? If it, if it went over a certain amount of money, or we needed more money, Charlene is here, and we would come, come back to council and request additional money. I was in that meeting, you were here, too.
I was, because Dr. Bellamy was the one that proposed it.
To me, like, you know, we've had this debate the last, like, three or four meetings, we've been talking about off-budget, off-budget cycle requests. This is the danger, is that if they become the default, we're going to start having, every meeting, there's going to be one or two, three requests where people want some amount of money that doesn't get dealt with in the original budget. We had a hundred thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars out of that hundred is significant, means fifteen percent is going in this one event. Now, there's an extra request for thirty-five thousand dollars more right here. This is what, we're dealing with this with the minority business promotion, which we agreed to do. I'm just saying, the whole city's going to have to watch the budget become spread out over the whole year. That's how we're all going to have to deal with it, and all tax dollars are going to get spread out over the whole year. We're not going to have one budget beginning. And it slips and slides, it's not going to be our duty, it's going to be the potential counselors here, but I'm just, this is the...
But you knew people could possibly come back, though, right?
No, I don't remember that. We allocate a hundred thousand dollars like we allocate, we do one budget, and we did a hundred thousand dollars.
But you remember that eighty for the DBA, right?
No, I wouldn't have, I, no, I didn't agree after we do the hundred, sure, everybody can come back for another thirty, forty, fifty, hundred. That's not how you do budgeting. If, if, that's not how you do a household budget.
You gave DMC fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
But that was a really exceptional case, and that was because they made an argument that, but they made an argument where they got a majority of council, and we considered... Well, that's...
Um, excuse me.
This is really how you want to...
There is a conversation that is happening between Tanisha, the presenter, and then council is asking questions about the, the request.
Can I just say something real quick? There's, there's something that the committee said that this was local talent, and I think that's what a lot of people are...
So we are...
This money was supposed to be...
It's just Tanisha.
For local talent. And I think that's what...
That's a very good point. Thank you.
Local talent isn't getting paid. No, but the thirty-five thousand dollars to somebody who's not from here, I think that's the problem, because this was supposed to be...
All right, is there a motion?
And that thirty-five thousand...
And I would ask before the motion, is there a budget for the thirty-five thousand? Do we know how it's being spent?
Was there a budget for John Fitton?
Yes, there was, and there was accounting that we requested. We needed accounting, yeah, there was. So it was, they did a presentation release.
Okay, so is there a...
Is there a budget? Is there a budget?
I think there's a budget.
There is a budget.
I just want to point a clarification based on what we heard Ms. Turner say, and this is to Mr. Wheeler, that was this, this was originally intended for local talent.
Well, I would, I think it's fair to say, Ms. Hudson's original presentation, calling it a made in Charlottesville reclaim concert, was a focus on local artists.
It was, until his team reached out and said he wanted to do it.
And, and I think, you know, one thing I would say on, on her behalf about this request, and, and her project in general, is just that it's going to be a really good event, whether council endorses an additional, additional funding for a new artist or not. I mean, I'm convinced Ms. Hudson's going to make this successful. Staff is working really hard to support this event. We're going to do the walkthrough with her this week with Parks and Rec and CPD, and make sure that everything is set up, so that this is a really good ending to the Unity Days.
So there is another, there's other performers coming?
There are other performers.
Okay.
Yep.
I think, so the question, the question that Counselor Signer raised in regards to, is there a budget? I think the request that was made by Ms. Hudson was that if these funds, because we have exasperated the equity, excuse me, the Unity Day budget, if this request could have come out of the equity fund, I have no issues with such. I do see this as a matter of equity, specifically revolving around entertainment. I think Ms. Katrina's point can be made about, is it supposed to be local talent? But Ms. Hudson has made it clear that there are local acts who will also be paid. If we want to, again, exasperate this, excuse me, if we want to amplify this event and do something for the city in which of the likes we haven't done before, which is what I thought Unity Days was about, that's what she's asking for. We've used the funds, and to me, this isn't really different from other requests.
But Dr. Bellamy, what, what is, what does thirty-five thousand dollars go to? What is it spent on? I know that there's a performer coming, but are we, and how do we know that it's being, what's it being spent on?
So to your point...
That's a budget.
Yeah, I think that's what it takes. So if Ms. Hudson were to provide us with a budget breakdown, it's my understanding, after speaking with her, one, for the artists, transportation, security, lighting, sound, there's a certain sound and whatnot that has to the stage, those kind of things have to be put forth for artists of this caliber. And I think it would behoove us if Ms. Hudson wants to get us a budget, provide that to us with that, let me kind of coil some of our misgivings.
But we're not meeting again, we can't, we, we wouldn't put, we ask these questions of anybody that we would give money, you know, our nonprofit budget. I mean, you're saying that we would make a decision without knowing that the money's being spent wisely for a act, without a budget, at that level of money?
You could, if you wanted to. Y'all proved everyone else, like, it's...
Just for your understanding and comfort, everything that you invested in Unity Days, all of those expenses are coming to me first with, first the project organizer submits a budget. Ms. Hudson submitted her budget for the original fifteen thousand, and then we are only reimbursing and directly paying invoices. So individuals are not being paid unless we have a business invoice from a vendor...
Well, I would hope so, or that sounds...
Yep.
Just, just so you know, that's all.
I mean, did you really pay the thirty-five thousand, and I was just going to walk out of here with a check, Mike? Like, seriously?
No, but I want to, I'd want to know if there's a talent fee that we would be comfortable with on top of what the rentals are. We don't have any idea what this money's being spent on.
You ain't have no idea?
So I do, I do have a question. Is, I do have a question about the amount of dollars that are being spent on security. Is it a way for us to help with that?
You got strategic initiatives dollars in y'all's budget.
Well, I'm just talking about, even if we don't board on the...
They don't, they don't have money in their budget to do it, but you have money in your strategic initiatives fund.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Just to clarify, we, this, this amount exceeds the council's discretionary maximum of twenty-five thousand. So this is, exceeds the council's discretionary fund. So I just want to just put that out there. And, and that, and we have a process in place, that someone has to make an application and be, be screened. We, we don't know this, who this vendor is, and it exceeds our competitive bids policy.
Well, I think, I think to that point, though, we don't, we don't know who any of the, like, for one, the council itself, we haven't seen any of the budgets for any of the other acts from Unity Day. Those responsibilities have been with Unity Day specifically. So for us to say, well, we haven't seen the budget, we want to know exactly X, Y, and Z, it would, to me, seems a little unfair, because none of the other acts or none of the other events of which we've seen have provided that to us, we've delegated that.
This is an excess of the budget that we had already approved.
But if the process of which is that, because she's asking it through Unity Day, and it's already been a Unity Day event, as we discussed process, it's going through Mr. Wheeler, and he's vouched for it. So I'm not, I'm just saying, the flaw, the reasoning, while I'm speaking still, the reasoning which we're using, to essentially what I'm hearing, say, deny, is flawed, because the items that you're asking for in terms of process, she's gone through with Mr. Wheeler. All she's asking for is additional funding.
Mr. Bellamy, we have not heard of this until this week, until this day.
You didn't hear about any of those events until you got the presentation?
And this is, I understood, and that's why I asked Mr. Wheeler, what was the budget? A hundred thousand dollars? And that there seem, there were definitely guidelines and parameters put in place with a review committee who is also working with them. And now this is outside of that process, so I, it's really important for us to ask these kinds of questions, to make sure we are holding them.
Is that I could have got the pavilion for free, which would have saved me money, and I could have took my fifteen thousand dollars and paid for an act like Wale if I wanted to. But instead, the Seaville Sing Out got the pavilion for free, which you're paying for, and Kirby was going to charge me twenty-three thousand dollars to rent the pavilion. So that's why I had to move the event to Tonsla Park, which now cost me to rent a stage, to buy a tent, to pay for security, so my money is being pushed in other directions when I could have been like everybody else and got the pavilion for free. So I could have paid Wale my fifteen thousand dollars, and then came back and got an additional amount of money, which would have been under twenty-five thousand dollars, Kathy. But that stuff you don't know about.
Why can't you, why couldn't you use the pavilion like all the other events?
Because it's only free the weekend of August the twelfth, and the, and the Seaville Sing Out got it, even though I wanted it on the tent.
But we have three dates, three free dates that, with the pavilion, so that's not...
And this is, it could have been because he's a for-profit artist, and Mr. Hutto has his policies about using the pavilion.
No, that's, no, that's not, that's not true, because we've done events with them before, which...
Okay, I think we need a, real quick, we need the motion to continue past eleven o'clock.
I'd like to make a motion for us to proceed until, with the cap at eleven-thirty.
I'd like to call the question. We've talked a lot.
But that's...
Call it down, man.
Okay, well...
Well, how about we... I guess, you already made a motion, Ms. Bellamy.
Yeah, how about we have a second?
You're, you're, you're going to that, you're continuing, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right.
Well, at this point, we have to, we're after eleven.
Right.
Second. On what? Were we moving the next?
Extending to eleven.
All right. So we need to vote.
I move we extend the meeting. He did that. Oh, you did that? Oh, okay.
Sorry. All right.
So we're extending the meeting.
We got to vote to extend the meeting.
To extend the meeting?
Based on the new votes.
Okay.
All right.
So I wasn't, I wasn't aware of the fact in which Ms. Hudson wasn't allowed to use the Pavilion in which, I mean, it's a Unity Day event and then all the other events are getting to have the venues. I see what she's saying, that would have been the money that she would have used for the artist. But I don't get, why wasn't she allowed to use the venue like-
So Mr. Wheeler, do you have some clarification there? So, excuse me, we-
So our, our initial, um, heading into this weekend, we talked to Kirby Hudo at the Sprint Pavilion and he offered the facility for Saturday and Sunday, uh, the tenth and eleventh. And we took that to the committee and said, we have this venue available. What kind of programming do we want to do there? And there were a number of ideas. Um, you may remember at an early meeting, we talked about a gospel choir event that would be on Sunday at the Pavilion. That idea was, uh, floated by the committee, but there, there was not a group behind it to make that happen. Uh, there was clearly an organized group behind the Seaville Sing Out. They had a well-thought-out proposal, budget, and people ready to make that happen. They also had the track record of doing it last year. Uh, they wanted a two-hour block at the Pavilion. And so part of our discussion, when the idea came up of how can we, uh, engage local artists and do something, uh, more substantial, uh, to support Ms. Hudson's goals, we talked about combining those two things on Saturday. Having different periods of time that would be programmed differently, but would accommodate both programs. Um, Ms. Hudson decided for a number of reasons that that wasn't the best fit, um, for her project. And, and I think it's fair to say that's what-
I asked them to move to Sunday and they said they couldn't because one of the members out of town. Because I said, gospel should be on Sunday, people go to church. So I could do it on Sunday and I can do the R and B and hip-hop on Saturday.
And, and you are still on a Sunday. And Sunday, the eleventh, was available at the Pavilion. But it just, it wasn't, it, it became a conversation that was taking it off that weekend as opposed to trying to make it work at the Pavilion. And I, and I think Ms. Hudson, um, went into negotiations with, uh, the Sprint Pavilion. And, um, it ended up being more expensive, uh, than we expected.
To do it the sev- eighteenth, seventeenth instead of the eleventh?
Yep.
There's a lot of, um, covert and just systemic ways in which we like to still operate with different things.
And they always do that.
The, the Seaville Sing Out, which, with, with all due respect, the, the Seaville Sing Out is a very different kind of event than what we're talking about in terms of attracting and retaining a different population or even targeting different people. It's no disrespect to the Seaville Sing Out, but we know who attends those kind of events. It's different from the population in which she's trying to bring in.
All right, so.
I've made a motion, um, in regards to allocating the funds that Ms. Hudson has requested and pulling those funds from the Equity Fund.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, if there's no second, then-
Wow. Just wow. You want second that to bring unity? You want us to believe that you believe in unity and you won't even allow see thirty-five thousand dollars?
Okay.
No, this one's not worth it.
All right, so. The next matters by the public?
Y'all just showed your true selves, what supremacy looks like in Charlottesville and the wider Terry McAuliffe is going around with his book. Y'all just wrote right into the chapter, beyond Seaville.
Hi, Eddie Olin K at A Legally Justice Center. I wanted to ask, um, some clarifying questions about council's comments post the civilian review board report. Um, I understand, based on what you said, Mayor Walker, that the timeline for council to start making decisions, um, will span over the next two months. It'll include meetings with city officials and that sometime in October, council will have something to say to the community. I think my question, the first question I have, um, is clarification around, uh, the meeting or meetings that are supposed to happen with the Fairfax, uh, civilian review board members and the city. To the extent that I understand civilian review board members from the initial CRB and the Fairfax Board have been in constant contact these, this past year plus about the Fairfax context and how that does or doesn't inform what needs to happen here in Charlottesville.
So, um, and anyone else can jump in, but I think it's just to make sure that we have full understanding. The way the year worked out, even the NACO training that was had, I feel, um, as if council and the initial CRB should have been a part of that board so that we all would have been receiving the same information and having the same discussions, you know, at the same time. Um, so this is really just for us while we are in the process of, you know, you know, starting something new, just understanding someone, a locality that has done it, um, just from us having those conversations that we haven't had as a board, so that everyone has the same information. So we un, I understand they've done, um, you know, done the research and had the conversations, but now, which I, which would have worked out if the, these conversations and, um, collaborations had been happening, um, the entire year, I think we would have been in a, um, different place in terms of this, what our next steps look like.
So, okay.
Excuse me, can I ask one quick question?
Hold on, just a second.
I was going to ask about that. You said y'all didn't come. Why, did, did, we said y'all couldn't, you know, when we had the NACO con, why y'all didn't come?
So, um, I think, um, that no one can sit here and say that, um, either from a council standpoint or a civilian, um, review that the, um, invitations and the, um, effective communication was happening. I mean, I proposed early on that, in terms of even I volunteered to be in, in the meetings with you all, um, as a council representative. Um, so this isn't a, I guess at this point, we're not in a pointing fingers position. It's just that we as a board, this is the part of the process that we've come up with in terms to make sure that we have, um, that we're getting the information, um.
So, so I think, then I'll change from questions into a specific comment, which is, I am afraid that what is being proposed by city council is to make yourselves experts, um, in a timeframe that will not match the actual timeframe that is necessary to become experts on the issue of-
I don't think, well, I'm not trying to make myself an expert, I'm just trying to get the information, which I would do with anything that came before council.
My, my sense is, having followed this process for the better part of two years, starting with the drafting of the resolution to this point, is that the experts are the initial civilian review boards. They have put before you a proposal that encompasses all the learning that there could possibly be as to how a civilian review board would function in Charlottesville. To the extent that no two civilian review boards, not even ones that operate in the same state, are alike.
And we understand that.
They are all different. And so my fear is that council might be thinking, even if not explicitly, that it can do a level of work that will allow it to substitute its judgment for the judgment of the initial civilian review board.
And I think that's an assumption.
To the extent that the initial civilian review board has put forward a package of information, that is some sixty pages, and that they are making themselves available to council for further questioning. You have the experts you need to give you the confidence to move forward with the plan right here in Charlottesville, in this community. And so I understand that the process where it wasn't something where council now feels that they worked or everybody was working as collaboratively as possible does not actually undermine the legitimacy of what has been put before you in the proposal. And so to the extent that council's plan is to move forward with closed-door meetings that involve only city officials and then come out to the community with a proposal or some other, um, recommendation, separate and apart from what is contained in the initial CRB's proposal about how council should move forward, it gives me pause that the process will not, in fact, be the transparent, accountable creation that was initially, I, I think, the intent of council when the resolution was drafted.
So the good part about that is we'll have a work session where everybody will be invited to and you'll get to hear whether we're being transparent and whether we're trying to, um, override the initial CRB process. And we will be back here, um, at the meeting discussion how we arrived at whatever the final output, which I don't think any of us can say at this time, um, will be, whether it's exactly what was recommended or whether it's something, um, different, that will be a public, um, conversation. And I'm sure along the way, since I volunteered and if there's someone else who would like, um, that there'll be questions and conversations with the, um, board members to make sure that we are, um, aligned with the vision. So I don't know how it's going to not be public, but thank you.
Okay, so I'd ask that council put forward then a specific timeline, that would be the request, because at this point, it seems a bit amorphous and not clear what the timeline will be. And so that everybody can be operating on the same expectation about when council will come with the work session,
So, I get it.
When this will happen.
And we said that this was our first time back together, um, since we received the draft.
Okay, and so then my, my, the request I leave you with is that at some point in the near future, that council produce a timeline for folks to see what the process will be step by step going forward.
Thanks.
And could you start the timer?
Josh Bowers, a member of the initial civilian review board. Um, I don't have a lot to say, I just, I, I actually think it makes perfect sense for you to, guys to want to speak to members of the Fairfax Board, but I think it's important to keep, um, to have a, a good sense going in what information you can get from them that will be of value and what information won't be of much value. I think it, they can give you information about what it means to be a board in a Dillon Rule state and maybe the hurdles they faced along those lines. But there, when you say they've done it, they've done and it, they've done a then.
We understand that.
Um, you know, one of the main things we heard from NACO was that, and I believe this is in the letter as well, there's no one-size-fits-all model. So what, we spent so much time doing this here, uh, because we could have cut and pasted their bylaws, but you know, we wanted to tailor our civilian review board. First of all, we wanted it to be something bold and novel, um, legal at the same time. But, um, you know, we, we wanted it to be a model for other municipalities, but we also wanted it to be the perfect model for this municipality. Um, and so just going into your conversation with them, I would urge you to keep in mind sort of what they can tell you of value, but where that information will kind of run out.
And I fully understand that I won't speak for the rest of the board, but that will be in a work session and it'll be public and hopefully you all will be, be there.
Uh, yeah, provided it, there, nothing, I, I fully intend to be there.
Can I make one quick comment about Fairfax? Um, so I think I've spoken with three or four people involved in the Fairfax, uh, group. There is an independent auditor named Richard Schott, who, um, does sort of the auditing side of things. And a lot of our auditing model was based on some of my conversations with him. Um, so I would encourage you not just to be thinking about the review board, which I don't even think that's what they call it, I think it's something else, IRP maybe. Um, not just the board, but also the auditor. Um, and then, uh, just to sort of, their history is one where they, I'm not going to know the date, I was actually just trying to look it up, when they started. But they began, I think, like twenty years ago, that might be Virginia Beach that I'm thinking of. They, they began a long time ago. People on the current board now, I've spoken with the chair and, um, one of the investigators who, um, actually his full-time job is to be a DC investigative, independent police, um, review board type investigator, whatever their version of that is. And then he also volunteers this time in his, um, domicile area where, uh, he lives in Fairfax. So I've spoken with those folks and it, it, one of the interesting things I learned in terms of at least the formation of it, is there aren't very many people who have had the experience of forming it in this way. I think this was a pretty novel approach. Novel in that the civilians kind of created it as opposed, I mean, I think it always starts with civilian outcry and political will, but this was kind of a different approach. And so in talking to them, a lot of my sort of structural questions about how to, how this could best function in Virginia, they just didn't know a lot of the answers to. Um, I'd be happy to point you in some directions of people who I found helpful for that educative process. Um, and I know that the people from NACO who trained us, um, have also said they'd be willing to speak with you all and, um, maybe do some sort of a, I mean, it would have to be like a, you know, conferency Skype thing, which is an ideal, but, um, but they have a, they're, they're just a wealth of information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So real quick, uh, for those who don't understand how Tanisha feel, let me explain something, a quick story. I'm sitting in a dinner at the NWCP annual dinner and I'm ear hustling, that means I'm listening to other conversation. And one of the black folks said, I had to leave Charlottesville to get culture. That was a hurting feeling for me because I'm from Charlottesville, I live in Charlottesville. So for black folks to feel like they don't have culture in Charlottesville, that's a shame. And y'all just, you know, I know you were thinking about the budget and whatever, right? But it goes to, back to the seventy thousand, the fifty thousand, the other stuff that, that comes out of the budget that nobody is like really talking about. But, like I said before, the story is about how we don't have black culture in Charlottesville and how it got destroyed for real from Vinegar Hill and have never been repelled. So, that's why I think a lot of folks are going to be really upset with, uh, city council going forth about this.
I have a question. How much in July two thousand eighteen, in the eighteen-nineteen budget, did you all put aside for safety during the first anniversary of the Summer of Hate? How much did you overspend on your public safety budget for the, over the top police presence that was there on the first anniversary? Y'all that were on the board, on the council here?
Then we set aside a million dollars for the safety.
How much did y'all set aside?
It was over a million.
Was it over a million? Okay, how much was spent above a million dollars? How much? Because I certainly don't recall any public comment being, uh, allowed for the expenditure. Was that an off-cycle additional expenditure for the public safety?
Done from the surplus the prior year, right?
So, sir, was it-
Yeah, yeah, but that was through a public meeting.
But that was still an off-budget use of expenditure? Well, I think, it, it certainly sounds like, and I am very disappointed with Mr. Signer, Ms. Galvin, and Ms. Hill that they wouldn't allow black culture to exist in this community. You're talking about Unity Days, you three just showed me disunity and I'm very upset with you. I'm, I'm, no, this is not about Ms. Mayor Walker, okay? This is not about Mayor Walker. This is about you three could have helped to provide something. And, and Ms. Hill, you could, you could robe your eyes all you want, I don't care. I don't care. I'm, what I care about is the fact that there are kids in this community that hate Charlottesville because they don't have anything to do. You know, and it goes all the way up to the, to the older people too. And you had a chance, you had a chance to set it right. But now you're just like Terry McAuliffe. Y'all telling a narrative that ain't true.
Oh God, why am I doing what I'm doing? By the numbers, Bill Brett produced a CD in nineteen ninety-two called How to Go Diamond in a Year, called six-six-eight-six-six, by the numbers. Now, by the numbers, you have to get, show fifty to get two. So in order to get the initial six, you have to show a hundred and fifty. Out of that six, you'll get two. You show another hundred and fifty and you'll get two. You show another hundred and fifty plus another hundred and you'll get three. After that, you get two and you get two. What you end up with is six. Now, since two thousand and two, I've created three hundred and sixty-five thousand contacts per year. Do the math, it's over six million contacts. So what I'm setting on right now is six million contacts. Names, numbers. Now, since January of, January first, uh, twen- uh, twenty, uh, nineteen, I've referred through the system a hundred thousand people. Now, many of you that are sitting in the back don't know what I'm talking about. Council members do because I've sent them emails. And so what I've done, what I've done is because I have the numbers. I have the numbers to go diamond twelve times in a year. Ask John Crowe, ask Bill Brett, ask Doug DeVaults, how many people have ever done that?
I just have one question, if somebody from city council answered me. I seem to remember at the end of last summer- remember at the end of last summer, the Pavilion roof needed to be replaced or repaired. Who paid for that?
The donors. City did not.
City did not pay for that?
No.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
I'm gonna say something about all three of y'all. I'm gonna start with you, lady, you. Because you know, earlier when you said something about that black and white thing, you was the same one up here crying for Thomas Jefferson's birthday. You was the same one that voted for that statue to stay. And then you, you took some offense to me saying about white men being in positions of power. See, this is what, what happened tonight with you guys not wanting to approve that money. This is what happens when white people are in positions of power. Because at the end of the day, you just proved exactly what we've been saying all this time we've been coming to city council anyway, that y'all don't give a damn about black people. You proved it. Mike, we already know what you care about at the end of the day. Your friends get what they want. Kathy's do too. All the developers that y'all cool with, that y'all go eat them little dry ass salads with, they get the money that they want when they come down here. Developers, Downtown Business Association, all of that. Y'all make sure that y'all pass that type of money. And Heather, you of all people, lady, after you set up in the Ebony Social Club so-called dinner, feeling out of place? Yeah, because you did. You have the nerve to even sit here and question black people even wanting something. You so fake. You go to the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet, and you sit there and you act like you really for black people, and you really not. You really not. Like, y'all prove it. Y'all like sticking to this bullshit narrative of Charlottesville after August 11th and 12th. Like, y'all, y'all like sticking to this narrative as if this town does so well for people of color, when in reality, it does not. And y'all know that. But if I was white, if I was a white lady, and I probably wanted to bring a white artist for Unity Day, or if I wanted to do something and cater to your people, you would have passed that money with flying fucking colors, and y'all know that. Y'all know that. Y'all know that. There's so much behind-the-scenes stuff that happened that y'all didn't even know about. Didn't even know about. Brian knew. I sent Brian the information. Kirby was gonna charge me $23,000 for the Pavilion. Everybody else got it free though. So instead of y'all asking questions, wanting to know more of the why and the reason why I wanted this event to happen and why I wanted that person to come here, it would have made this city look so much better for people of color. You know, the people that you guys often leave behind, that you clearly forget about all the time? And then y'all sit here with these dumb looks on y'all face, and then y'all turn red as a goddamn bee.
Tanisha.
I mean, but what they red for? Like, why y'all, y'all red for what? For what? You had the opportunity to do something, to put on for the people of Charlottesville, the taxpayers who, and I pay my taxes just like you and everybody else in the city. But y'all take the money and do other stuff with it every other, every other time. Every other time. Every other time. Something that really could, really could have put this city on in a different light. And y'all don't care. Y'all don't give a damn.
Thank you.
It's sad.
Is there anyone else who's here for Community Matters?
I feel like last year, we had snipers. It was a peaceful protest. This year, she tried to do something good for us, but y'all didn't care about that. Y'all want us to remember the snipers that gunned the state police, the barricades that we had last year for no reason. But once someone tries to bring something good to us, y'all shut it down. It's Vinegar Hill all over again. White people take it over. Gavin, we were cool. But then you show your true colors. Every single time, every time I give you a drop of faith, it dries up. Singer, I don't know what's going on with you, but we try to change this narrative in Charlottesville, because someone who wants to bring positive to Charlottesville, you don't want it. You worried about, oh, we don't have the document, the budget plan. Fuck the bu, budget plan. DMC didn't give a budget plan.
Marissa.
Sorry. Excuse my French. And you, Heather, sit up there, oh, I'm for the people. Oh, can I speak to you? Can we have a private meeting? Hell, no, we can't have a private meeting, because you have two sides. One side is the good side, oh, I'm gonna show you good faith. Other side is this bullshit that we get right here. You sit up here and you...
Yeah, backstabber. Ain't no stake.
You're a backstabber. Any chance you get, you stab somebody in the back. And now it's time that Charlottesville, we try to reclaim our narrative. Y'all don't want to participate in it. But let Dave Matthews Band or any of the other white things come to Charlottesville. Y'all allow it. We're not asking for much. We don't ask for much. Just a little appreciation. Change this narrative in Charlottesville. But until you do that, we don't support you. You know, the first chance we get to vote your ass off, you're gone. Ain't no rerunning. And there goes for you too. I pray. You, goodbye. But it's time that we make this change. I thank Bellamy and everybody else and Nakaya. But y'all three, y'all are Hitler's best friends. Might as well say Trump's best friends. Y'all probably BFFs. Got a chat going on. We are the white supremacists of Charlottesville. Hell, yes, y'all are. And it doesn't make any sense. I shouldn't have to be saying, son, we live in Charlottesville where we're not treated right. But if you're ever in this situation, you have to do this. I shouldn't have to do that. I want my son to feel proud that he's a black African American. But with y'all trying to do this, he, I can't say that, because y'all don't give us the respect where it's due. All these years, it's the same thing. Thomas Jefferson to when y'all allowed these people to come here. All we want is a change, and y'all don't want to do it.
I just cannot believe I was just called Hitler's best friend.
Hell, and Trump's.
You said Hitler's best friend, ma'am.
And Trump.
You said Hitler's best friend.
Okay, so is there anyone else who, all right, meet in a jar.